Almighty God, under whom all hearts are open, all desires known, for whom no secrets are hidden, let us hope for our hearts by the inspiration of thy voice, that we may perfectly belong and worthy of your glory in the evening to Jesus Christ. Amen. I will ask if there are any new elders that have been present during the first Sunday conference or are Sunday members? Yes. I'm sorry, your person? David Allison from the Church. Welcome to the present.
I would ask that you just give a very powerful, well, as something members of this church are talking about, and this way, probably, he's not.
All right. We welcome you, Craig, and all. Do you know who's the first Sunday member? It's time, I'll be right back. Can you afford to prepare a little more?
Thank you all for coming. This is a big night for us, and we appreciate you coming on a non-scheduled night. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce my favorite committee in the Presbyterian, and that is the search committee. We've had them for everybody out here. Mary Earl Gero, Gray Faulkner, Mick Hatch, Clark Walker, and Irene Pie, who's on her way, oh, she, there's Clark Walker. Irene Pie, who's on her way from New York City, and Sheila White, who is our first wild COA with the liaison. This is really my favorite committee in the Presbyterian, no offense, but there it is. My question with this will be very quick. We're going to read it fast because it's maybe the most boring part of our report, and that is the history of our search. And you know it's been a long search, so I think maybe I get one minute for each year. Right? Okay. Search Committee was meeting on April 29th, 2004, and immediately began training with State Clerk Bertie Kimmel, our then-COA liaison Don Wise, and our interim student, there's Irene Pie right now, and her husband. We began training with Bertie Kimmel, our COA liaison Don Wise, and the interim student that's at Royal. The first year or so, we met about every other week, and we followed a process which was very similar to those of a church DNC, and we went as close to the PCUSA handbook for middle government body search committees as was practical for us. We established an initial timeline about one year, and continually revised it, and eventually threw it out. The veteran part of 2004 spent conducting surveys throughout the Presbyterian and interviewing the third mission in order to write mission study in preparation for writing the church information form. The position and person descriptions, and we have a copy of any of those tonight, so if you remember what my family's supposed to be doing when it joins us, the position and person descriptions in the church information form were reviewed by the May on industry and by the mission council in February, April, of 2005. On May 10th, 2005, the Presbyterian approved the person and position descriptions. Our church information form was posted on the PCUSA website shortly thereafter. Clark Walker developed our own website, which is connected to the Presbyterian and Brunswick website. That went up about the first week of June, and on 5th, it remained there throughout our search. Our PIF, no, our CIF, remained open on the PCUSA website for about a year without a deadline until we chose to take it off the website. Our ad hand in Presbyterian outlook for Presbyterian is today from June 2005 into September of 2005, and we announced the position to all of the PCUSA students, Presbyterian seminaries, and our own churches, and we're grateful to those of you who gave us names to consider. PIF began arriving in mid-June, and our interview process began at that time, and ran through September of 2006, so we were interviewing from June '05 to the end of September '06. In that time, we read sixty-some PIS and interviewed about eleven candidates by phone or in person. This was a national search, including some applicants from around our Presbyterian. There was a nice racial ethnicity in our days of interview weeks, and then finally we could take our PIF off the website until, I think, mid-June of '06. We approached this call as mutual discernment with our candidates, and our criteria for call was basically committing and admitting to me. We learned through our process that any single dissent had to be heard and considered, and in that way, a dissent, a dissenting voice, carried, well, carried as much weight as the majority. At the end of September '06, we took some sage advice and stopped our work to begin again in January '07. We recorded our progress with the council in September '06 and described our new timeline and revised strategy. Our new plan included an update of our CIF and reposting it early in January '07 with a resumé deadline on March 21st, which was a really good idea. The new timeline marked two-one as our projected call date. Changing strategy, really, or sort of new strategies to adopt a little bit more corporate way of interviewing candidates, rather than interviewing as if we were calling a pastor, we interview as if we were calling an administration position, which we are. With an imminent deadline, we were able to amass the most promising PIS, conduct back-to-back call-by-are runs, and then interview our final candidates in one weekend. And in this round of applicants, we received seventeen PIS, breaks of the last one, and we found four of promise. From those, we chose two finalists, and finished finalist was on May 31st, '07. We deliberated for a couple of days and then did an analyst dis sermon called Gray Geller on June 6th, '07, so there were only a week off, not even a week off, of our timeline. We know that we're going to keep in prayer shortly, but we know that there's some questions in mind here about why we might call an associate DP at this time when Joyce has announced her new call. We had an opportunity to talk about that before our final interviews with committee. We, sort of on the Presbyterian's behalf, have been completely committed to this job description since this approval by Presbyterian. The work describing this needs doing very much, and it has needed doing very much for the last three or four years. Further, we were in the midst of a fairy tale and dis sermon of a two-year search in which we had interviewed a great many wonderful candidates, and we were really zeroing in on our finalists when we learned Joyce's call. We learned of that call on Monday, our final interviews were Tuesday and Thursday of the same week. So, we were able to, with more marching finalists, of the change, this new dynamic, and certainly there was surprise, and even a little excited about the potential for a change, certainly unfazed by Joyce's departure. This work, as described on the position description, should still be a vital part of our strategy for certain churches. We are convinced that we have been patiently led, and we weren't necessarily the nation's ones, the leader was the nation's one, patiently led through this process for a crucial end. We believe that there's nothing to fear in calling an associate DP, even in the time of transition. So, on lighter note, in this time, the committee shared a great portion of life and work. We've got a whole lot of good people who are committed to the health of Christ's church, and we learn all kinds of new things through them. We share a whole lot of the fellowship with candidates and redapt. In restaurants and in our homes, Mick Hatch met Hale. He dated her, he married her, they celebrated an anniversary, of course, for our plan together. Mary Earl Gero's daughter searched for Ragg and, Christ God, returned her home safely to get there and then have a baby. We, my family had, we had a husband, and I had two grandchildren, and Irene Pie changed jobs. Irene Helen Clark traveled to Taiwan and Thailand, Israel, and brought over men's for each of us. Gray Faulkner and Clark Walker each had major surgery. Gray started a new search in minutes of hours and took a new call in the morning of the month. We lost our dearly beloved COA liaison Don Wise, and we gratefully received our dearly beloved COA liaison Sheila White in this place. Crossed stamps went up twice, and we are now on our fourth moderator. That is my prayer. And I call Gray Faulkner.
When we began our work in the spring of 2004, we thought our mission would be completed within a year. We were wrong. Beyond work related in the mission study for the high Presbyterian and by the CIF that would be both accurate and winsome to a candidate, we have grown as a committee. God accomplished that growth through many, many conversations in times of prayer and liberation. Our community is different. We are a very different bunch of people, and we're represented to some degree in diversity of our Presbyterian, and it took a while for our committee to grow together in trust and understanding and openness of the Holy Spirit. For me, and maybe for others on the main people scene, it was after we completed that first year that I realized that this truly was a process of discernment. We weren't just hired with a candidate for the fifth in job description and in person description, which the Presbyterian had agreed upon. We were searching with the person, the spirit was calling us too. The psalmist says, "You will show us a path that leads us alive. Your presence fills us with joy and brings us pleasure forever." Over time, our thinking shifted several times. Several wonderful candidates came and visited with us and aided us in the spirit's work of the sermon. Each candidate had provided him gifts and experiences, but we knew that they would not come along if you were seeking. It took a while before we learned that God's Spirit was using those candidates in our larger conversation to hone our own discernment, to tell us the direction we should go. The psalmist said, "We are always aware of the Lord's presence. God is near and nothing can shake us. You will show us a path that leads us alive." We were looking for the path. There were all candidates whom we talked with and felt were right, were very right, but that was not where we finally were able to go. So, we re-grouped one last time, believing that the God of the gospel of Jesus Christ we know about the Holy Spirit was calling us to continue our journey in prayer for the sermon. We said to the psalmists almost every time we met, "You, Lord, are all we have. You give us all we need. Our future is in your hands." In the last few months, we've been blessed with a significant number of strong and exciting candidates, and this time, we as a committee have been seasoned by living and by praying together. I believe that we have learned something about openness to the Holy Spirit, to the Spirit's power, and the Spirit's gentleness. We come to this evening convinced that God has brought us to this moment in God's good time. It is not the time we had anticipated, and it's not the time that you had expected. Yet we believe in this, if we did not say to you, our sisters and brothers of the Presbyterian and Brunswick, that we had not made this decision after being formed as a committee of prayer and discernment and trust. A committee who has seen the Holy Spirit working often in very surprising ways to bring us a candidate we believe has been called to this part of the kingdom for such a time as this. Of course, we couldn't have guessed the nature of this time, this present moment, but in our reflection, we are sure that the psalmist is right. Our future is in God's good hands, and that all the good things we have come to the Lord our Father. To this God be glory and praise and honor now and forever. Amen. Obviously, it's going to be minutes and thirty seconds back. Thank you to some of the people that helped us out, except they do want the thirty seconds very good. And hopefully, I'll leave anybody, because we've got a lot of wonderful support and assets on our behalf. First, I thank, and I mean for all the companies, friends, coffee, we can arrange, and dinner arrangements for us, and different places, we can arrange for our candidates as we walk to them and help their visit of churches. And also, to Joyce, every now and then, kind of, help us out in terms of visiting device, doing checkouts on different things, and even remembering these names of people they've known many years. Again, thank you, Sad, and great. We also thank some of the churches that does, some of the facilities where we need, Passover Church in particular, for the school and the kind of peace we use at churches for occasions and meetings. We also need to visit our seminary a year and a half, so they were very kind and gracious and generous, nice faces, and also generous, nice kids. We also have to especially thank to our plea, plea, and song, CC, and Sheila White, who sat in on the fortune that had the sudden death of Don Wise, who was really our spiritual guide and teacher to his purpose, and her spiritual guidance overall for us. We also need to thank the church. When we had hand this up, we took them around to various churches, and sort of gave them a feel about the Presbyterian and Brunswick. They had so many wonderful things to say. When we visited churches, we were all thrilled. There was something that was offensive, but right away, the minister came out to say, "What are these people?" And then we asked them, even if they were wherever they are, some meddon staffs, some secretaries, and yet, there's so many wonderful people out there, working on churches, who's it, that was the best part of it. It was enjoyable visiting churches, and you would hear this, you know, about what they saw, how they felt, and they were so impressed, and they got to see the Presbyterian going best of all, and I think they're all very dissimilar in his fault. That's true. We also need to thank the Presbyterians, they've been waiting for a long time, three years, and obviously, we've done some things. I'm very thankful that I worked there a year after, management of that six months later, and I know somebody not here said, you know, when I was covering, said, "Please, please, don't even think about leaving the committee." But we were, they, they duly began, and they're like, "I need their support and concern forever." Also, I've served here, and that's just, like, this family passing, people passing next to next. It didn't just work for me to support, it was a choice for me. And as I sort of started saying, the Presbyterian, I'm very thankful for patients, and a long process. We kind of should be with her, and I think, and she not your word, for our life, all of these are, because this earth was pointless to visit the community. I remember briefly, I was just about in New York, the church on Sunday morning, and the phone rang, and I said, "A minute quick, somehow I thought I'd let me pick up, see if the store for offices." You're probably in waiters, and yes, I am. Well, I have a little thing I'd like to ask and consider. Would you be willing to be on the search when you were looking at? I said, "Well, let me think about it, you observe, something you'll pull back tonight." But she was promptly, I remember, deep, what, we couldn't think about it, but she had said to us, "Oh, she'd be very easy." It was everything regular, she said, she was in hand, so she's over there, and sleeping that way, so it's irrelevant. So, again, thank you to everyone who helped us, supported us with this period.
And now, it's my pleasure and honor, on behalf of the ADP nominating committee, to[1179.83][1179.83]introduce our candidate for nomination, the Reverend Gray Geller. Early on, this committee knew we were seeking a particular person chosen by God, and with God's help, we stayed the course until that candidate's information form popped up on our screens. We had found that person, Gray, who was ordained to work in sacrament in 1990. Over the past fifteen years, Gray has gone from a pastor in Florida, and most recently, Presbyterian staff to church development in Wabash Valley Presbyterian, which is in Indiana. He has studied, trained, and taught in congregations, church development, and church redevelopment, revitalization, and new church development in towns and cities to English and Spanish-speaking people, and predominantly white, Hispanic, and African congregations. He gave leadership to many Presbyterian committees before, during, and following ordinations. And some of those committees were stewardship, planning, mission, church development, and many others. His toolbox is well-equipped with new and tried methods, processes, and analysis. Some of those are first step, Alpha, natural church development, three corners in ministry, new consecration Sunday, emotional IQ, and much more. Gray's love for God and proclamation, Jesus' Lord, and the excitement for the future of the Congregational Church seal our decision to present Gray Geller, our chosen candidate for new runs for the Presbyterian this evening.
See this three-inch blu-ray holder? I've been carrying this around for three and a half years. This is my search committee folder. He's missed, but Papi said, "I was a single man when this committee started working," and I'm now about ready to celebrate my third anniversary. So, that puts it into perspective a little bit. It has been a long journey, and I've been asked throughout the process, "Can't you find anyone?" And we could find someone, but we were not just looking for anyone. We were looking for a person we believed to be called to this position, and it was not, and it was a search. We were committed to the mutual discernment of the call process, and so it was a long journey, but it is with excitement, nights, and joy that we present the Reverend Gray Geller as the Associate Executive Presbyterian of Brunswick. Our conversations with Gray and his references have helped us mutually discern that Gray is a great fit for our Presbyterian. As Helen just mentioned, we were impressed with Gray's background, which includes experience in both new church development and church redevelopment and church revitalization at both the Presbyterian and the congregational level. I want to, though, make a few notes about what we heard from his references. Gray's references describe him as a person that is knowledgeable about processes and knows how to get things done. They describe him as someone who puts a lot of personal effort into those projects and is good at developing leaders. He is well-organized, a great teacher, and a helper. Gray is described as a person that listens, a compassionate person, and a loving person. He is hospitable and welcoming, a person who has lots of energy, and a person who moves well within different theological perspectives. Gray is someone who is excited about ministry and was described by one reference as a cheerleader at times, with lots of energy and positivity. And yet, Gray can ask hard questions and works well in difficult situations. Gray is said to be extremely optimistic, and we observed that in our conversations. One particular reference characterized Gray as having unwavering hope. And it is with that same hope that we present Gray tonight. Living into any reference is always a challenge, but we present Gray with the assurance not that he's perished, but that the Spirit has called him to this place and asked him.
So, I think it's time to have Gray come up here. I'm talking about what's happened to him. We'll ask you, Gray, to tell a little bit about your faith story and then how COA did last night, and the body, and some of the questions of your statement in the faith. This is Gray Geller.
Well, it is quite exciting for Rob and I to be here after, it's rather, it's like a long process, you know, it's been real long for me, and because I have, I have been looking nationwide, I just, I placed, a place that would be able to utilize our skills, a place that would, where I would be able to fit in, kind of theologically and culturally, some places you just don't fit, and that's, that's why I'm standing here tonight. I was one of these un-church people. I folks didn't attend church when I was growing up, and I had heard of Jesus Christ, but really, that was just a name to me, and when I became about twenty years, when I was about twenty years old, my fraternity had rented a motel on Daytona Beach, and I was training over a hangover one morning, and a fellow came home with this little booklet that said, "Four Spiritual Laws," and he began to talk to me about this Four Spiritual Laws, and, well, it was, it was the first time I heard the Gospel. It wasn't the full Gospel, but it was part of the Gospel, and I just, something in my heart at that moment said, "This is the truth. You need to pay attention to what's going on here." And before long, a few weeks, well, a few months actually passed, and I became a Christian. And through college, I didn't really have any contact with the church, and these evangelical organizations don't really encourage you too much either, so on, and I wasn't telling them, I got out of school, and I began to look for a church, and I tried this, and I tried that, and finally, somebody invited me to come to their Presbyterian church. Pay attention, someone invited me to come to church. And it was, it was, I just felt like I'd come home, and I was telling the committee or somebody last night that I discovered, actually, I had Presbyterianism in my blood. I discovered just a few years ago that my grandfather, who was Cuban, was a Presbyterian, but he never told me. So, anyway, that's also a joke. Anyway, the fact is, in early 1980s, I became a member of the Presbyterian Church USA, actually, PCUAS at the time, and really, really enjoyed being involved in the church. Just thought it was so much good that was being done by the church. I thought, I wonder if people realize how much good the church does, and how interesting it is to be part of committees and doing things together and changing this community and even affecting things in other parts of the world. I thought, this, this is really fun. And so, I began to eat it, and then some things happened, and I ended up moving on to another church. This was an African-American Presbyterian church. My pastor was Brian Martin, and he taught me, I agree with that, and I just, I said, so much joy being part of this other cultural experience. I've always been attracted to other cultures, and it seemed to me that this was, this was another kind of spiritual experience, but it was still basically reformed Presbyterian thing, and that was, that was really fun to be involved in that. And I felt my call to full-time ministry while I was in this church. I became an elder there, and then went to seminary from there, and I went to the School of Union in Richmond, which, you know, we've always had this inferiority complex of Princeton. My greatest fear coming here tonight was somebody that Princeton community is going to give you a hard time. So, as I was in this seminary, I began involved with Presbyterian, the Presbyterian of James, and they needed a hunger action neighbor, and I'd been involved with hunger issues for a long time, crop laws, bread from the world, and all this kind of stuff, so when I applied, it was, you know, like, I was spurred.
So when I applied, it was, you know, like, I was perfect. And so I went, I went there the whole time I was in seminary. And when I finished, I was hoping to be a missionary, but I couldn't find anything that quite fit my gifts. And I went into parishioner's street, and did that for fifteen years or so, three different churches. And I was doing quite a bit of redevelopment, but I didn't know that's what you call it. And saw some growth churches and realized that sometimes it's, it's kind of painful to get people to try new things and to just always change, such a big issue. But I think I'm pretty good at getting people to open up to trying new things, and that's why I think I've been fairly good at what I do, is when I'm working for people, I can get them to open up to possibilities. And when people begin to open up, that's when the Holy Spirit can begin to move them. And I've seen that in over and over here. So that's a little bit of my history. I just realized from that, here's been this Presbyterian Indiana, and I was hoping that it might last a little longer, but the financial situation wasn't going to allow it. So I began to look, well, six, six, eight months ago, and looked at several things, and I just feel that I can be most secure, pretty much, in what the parishioners in place in the country. And I hope that your role will be constant. Reverend Greg, Presbyterian, we have a great stake of faith printed for us as we're being to serve in sacrament, in the Lord's Presbyterian, as he's not to part agree that, run that trust in you, and I invite you now, anybody from Princeton who wants to get a great word, or anywhere in the world, to ask a question. If you want to ask a great big question to the board. Sorry, will we write that down? Yes?
Reverend Mr. Nelson, we did a third paragraph, you say. It says, "Third question about the Holy Spirit." I wonder what's needed by that.
I believe the, I'm sorry, is it the first paragraph or the third? Third paragraph. The, I believe the thing, the Holy Spirit is, is that is a part of personal trinity that reveals to us even that we can comprehend about God. We being finite, he being, he, she, whatever you want to say, being the intent, it would be impossible for us to, to, to comprehend or to grasp what God is all about. So the Holy Spirit is the means by which we are able to even begin to apprehend who God is. And of course, the Holy Spirit is the one who works through Scripture so that we might understand what God is.
I guess, yes, Reverend Floyd Church, such an active church. On that same sentence, second line, foretakenly revealed, "As for what you mean in the good word," I was kind of puzzled with that sentence. God's presence and activity were revealed as the good word of God.
You are right. And that, thanks so much. I noticed that in my Word, Microsoft Word, there was a little line under this "as," and I thought, "What is wrong with this?" I just, I just, you're exactly right.
The theological edition.
Yeah. I couldn't, I couldn't figure out what was wrong with this word. It isn't right. Your rights are, thank you so much. I'm sure that it was. Any other questions?
Yes.
Oh. I, I think that, that is something I heard somewhere, it was when I was writing, it struck me this whole day, but I'm not sure it has any deep meaning, I'm sorry. It was, it's this.
I believe it was like a poem. That struck me too, it was actually in Washington.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Well, Reverend, let me give it, and I have questions I thought you gave in the space, but about the responsibilities and kind of, first question is, could you give me your understanding of the difference between redevelopment and revitalization?
Yeah, I think so. They, these terms have kind of been merged into a term called transformation. I'm sure you've heard that term. But redevelopment is, it usually involves a very concrete plan to change the whole, change the direction of a church. Revitalization is taking what's already there and kind of, kind of massaging it, making a few little small tweaks, but hoping that, that, that will, that will make a difference. So redevelopment is just at a larger scale, it involves a long-range plan that really takes into account what's happening in the community that you're in and what's taking place in your, in your, in your own congregation, changes that are taking place in the congregation. So it's just a much more in-depth, you know, kind of process. Redevelopment involves usually a three-year plan with some major, sometimes it requires you looking into location and constantly changing your location. Revitalization is basically leaving, leaving things pretty much the way they are, but trying, trying to do new things that like, you know, brings a new life.
Reverend, and I am not a graduate, I graduated from Baptist Jesus Church Center, and I give you my concerns about accountability and structure because of that. Therefore, your job description, and this is partly for you, but also partly for the search committee, as you're accountable to the detective Presbyterian and evaluation detective Presbyterian, in a changing time, how would you understand your responsibility and evaluation process given the change in the structure? And the question to the committee is, how have they shaped that airline and looked at the beginning of the tradition?
Actually, that's not, I think, a question the search committee itself can answer. I think the way we see it immediately is that Greg is acting as a staff, and so some of those responsibilities that our personnel committee is ultimately responsible for our staff, and so we have major parts playing that. But as for any other future structure, whether we would have PPs and A P Ps and some other nomenclature, not our job. Thank you, Paul.
But there is a person.
Yes.
Any other questions? Single parents, I'm sorry. Yeah. Well, I've been involved primarily in rural ministry, where I've been, and I'm looking forward to the urban environment. I'm looking, I'm looking forward to, in particular, the diversity that you have in your urban environment. I, I have some, you know.